Good evening. If we could call this meeting to order. If we could please start with a moment of silence for prayer or reflection. Thank you.
So first up, we have adoption of the agenda.
Any additions? Okay, seeing none.
Next, we have adoption of the minutes. On page four, you'll find item 3.1, minutes from our February 5th meeting.
Any errors, submissions? All right, seeing none, we'll adopt the minutes.
So we'll move on now to presentations. We have Deputy Reeve Dan Hamilton from Cypress County, who's here to present a check regarding the recreational facility operational grant.
I'd just like to accept this check. It's $200,000.
Yep.
Maybe I'll take a look at it. See, it's the real deal. Yeah, $200,000 made out to the City of Mesna. So I'd just like to thank the county. We also have councillor Kirby White here as well. The county does not have to do this. They do not, are not required at this, at this time, under the MGA, to give us this check for $200,000 towards our operational budget. But what they are, the reason why they are doing it is that they recognize that some of their citizens are, are in our city, using our facilities, and they want to help out and, and contribute their fair share. So I think on behalf of myself and the rest of the city council, we, we truly, really appreciate that. And if anybody else wants to contribute, we will take your checks as well.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Looking forward to, in the future with all this, too. Thank you very much.
Could I get a motion for, I guess, reception?
Well, I'll move reception, but I'd like to make a comment, and I think-
Sure. Oh, yes, sorry about that.
Councillor Dumanowski would too.
Second.
Just, just briefly, just to support what the mayor said. We, you know, we've always enjoyed a very strong relationship with the county, that of a good neighbor, that of a, you know, we were colleagues in a lot of things, we, we've shared a lot of projects together. We've had, you know, times when we did not always agree on everything, but we've always been very strong neighbors, and, and I really appreciate that through my years on council, and I've never felt any differently about it. And I just, this is not the first time the county has provided support. We've had it for projects, several projects in our community. We always appreciated that. And I just think, for me, this, this signifies something different, though. It's not for a capital project. It is in, it's acknowledging that we're finding a way to work together even more strongly as regional neighbors, and that we share some services and some things together that we're willing to, to support each other on. And so, not only will we be required to be in more regionally strong relationships, but the county has, by, by showing this leadership, the county has come forward and said, no, we're, we're on the cutting edge of, of being leaders in this regional relationship. We're going to start it off in a way that, that acknowledges this. And I really support that anyway. I don't want to go on and on. But I, I just really support you doing this, and I thank you very much.
Thank you. Councillor Dumanowski?
Your worship, just to add to what councillor Friesen said, I, I do appreciate the Deputy Reeve Hamilton and councillor Kirby White for coming this evening and making this presentation. And at first blush, it's one politician patting another one on the back, but the true fact of the matter is that, as has been indicated, there was no obligation, there is no obligation for the county to do this. You have been tremendous partners in, in this building of this community and, and the neighboring community of Cypress County through capital donations in the past, and now a voluntary operational donation. It really speaks to the spirit of, of what it means to work in collaboration and to find that synergy between the, the county and this community. There are, we have a relationship, whether we, I was going to say like it or not, we like it. But, but the fact is, your community of citizens use our facilities and, and we move out into the county. But in the end, when we can strike a positive chord based on an understanding that isn't legislated, it really speaks volumes to, to that relationship. And, and I want to thank you for that sincerely, and on behalf of the citizens of Medicine Hat. The regionalization is kind of a tone that is, is coming forward, and it'll be a forced one, but in this case, absolutely voluntary and, and out of the goodness of, of your guys' heart and, again, the relationship. So congratulations and thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right, we have a motion on the floor. If we could vote for reception. That was unanimous. Thank you.
Moving along now to reports. Item 5.1, on page eight, you'll find the Development and Infrastructure Committee meeting of February 7th, and this report's for adoption.
I'll move that report for adoption.
Second. Any comments? Councillor Turnbull?
Thank you, your worship. Just so to inform our, our citizens of what the situation is at the old Mingtree or, or the Post Saloon. I'm, I'm on the right topic, right?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. I thought for a minute I-
Some, some memories are coming back there.
Yeah. So it's interesting what you learn when you get on council. The first well that the City of Medicine Hat drilled was way back in 1903. And of course, as wells became unable to produce enough gas to continue pumping, they were abandoned. And of course, gas, like water, migrates, it migrates through the cracks in the soils. And as a result, the Mingtree was, was actually drilled in early 1900s, and was, and the, the gas has now went to the substructure of the, the building, and that's why it has to come down. Now, this is an orphan well, which means it belongs to the Orphan Well Association of the Government of Alberta. And so, we are partnering with them to, because we will then regain the property. This is sort of the downside of the gas business. The upside was the golden goose that was giving all those beautiful golden eggs. The downside is, we now are forced to clean up some of the old wells that, way back in the 40s and 50s and 30s, that technology is not like it is today. So, I know some citizen called me and thought it was a total waste of funds that the city was spending to this project. But we have no choice. We can't leave gas spewing out of that well, and so it has to be fixed properly. And the Orphan Well Association, once the building is down, will have full control and to monitor that, that well to ensure that it doesn't give us any more problems. So, do we have wells within the city that aren't orphan, which means they're owned by the City of Medicine Hat? Yes, we do. And so, over the course of time, we will be doing similar projects to, to clear up those wells. We, we right now monitor 45 wells every year to ensure that the gas levels are acceptable to the province. So, just wanted the, not just the council to know, but our citizens to understand that there's a downside to everything, and the upside was, we made lots of cash when things were great, and the downside is that now we have to unfortunately fix the problems that technology was not available to in those earlier years. Thank you, your worship.
Thank you. Well said. Councillor Friesen?
Thank you, your worship. Councillor Turnbull's comments are, are well taken here. Just a couple of questions. I realize that the OWA is going to assume full responsibility. I'm wondering two things. One, is that in perpetuity? And two, what happens if there's a change in the policy of the Government of Alberta, where orphan wells, you know, the orphan well fund no longer exists or whatever? Is there a, is there a point in time when we might have to take this back? I'm not trying to be looked down the road with pessimism, but I'm just curious about that.
That's a good question.
So I'll, I'll let CEO Haglund answer that question.
Through the Chair to councillor Friesen. Yes, it's in perpetuity. Now, the orphan well fund is funded by industry, so there is a continuous source of funding coming in through the Alberta Energy Regulator to, to deal with, you know, bankruptcies in particular, where the, the corporation that originally drilled the well can no longer have the financial responsibility for us. With the, the current state of the industry, they've had a huge influx of wells, and they have actually capped taking in new wells, and they're now being directed to what they call a legacy fund as opposed to the orphan well fund. But I mean, this, this is a challenge for the entire industry and, and the entire province, the number of abandoned wells around. With respect to these old wells, though, they are in the orphan well fund, they will stay in the orphan well fund, and they will be in perpetuity, have full responsibility for them. We don't really have a concern about that. Do you have a supplementary question to that, or?
No, no, not really. I just, you know, the orphan one well fund is, it may be paid for by the industry, but it is there by virtue of government policy. So I just wondered, especially given the pressure there is on the orphan well fund right now, if that, if that government policy was to ever change, that we've never undertaken a partnership like this before. So what would happen? Would we have to take it back? That's all I was wondering.
So through the Chair, as councillor Turnbull indicated, we already have about 70 wells within the urban area that we do, some of them we monitor more frequently, but we have a total of about 70 that belong to the city. There are a number that are not assigned to orphan well that probably should be, where we really don't have a current owner, and we continue to work with the Energy Regulator to, to make sure that they get assigned somewhere and somebody is accountable for it. We may, in the future, come forward to council and ask for a bylaw around ensuring that all owners of all wells are as responsible as our own NGPR and orphan well association is, just to make sure that that monitoring is happening within our urban limits. But I believe as a municipality, we are more on top of it than most, because we are also in the business and we understand what needs to be done. And this initiative in particular is one that is strongly, will strongly support public safety, and in particular in the downtown core, and so that's why we've entered into this agreement with orphan well.
Thank you, councillor Dumanowski.
Your worship, I'm, I'm trying not to tag Team Councillor Friesen here tonight, but it looks like we're, we're on a roll here. Just to, to add to the conversation around this, very quickly, shout out, I guess, to the Medicine News, who, Mr Sizens did a story on this, actually, I think, a couple Saturdays ago. I always find those extremely fascinating, and the history, if I recall, was, there was a whole tale on this plot in about 1890, a well was dug. You needed, you needed source of energy, you just dug a well. And in this case, there was no casing, and it was known to have leaks and that. And in fact, I believe the article went on to say, at one point, because gas didn't have the addition of the scent to it, it was, it wasn't noticed, but a young boy had lit the stove or something at, at one point, and, and the building had a fire. He was not, he was spared, but it did indicate the history, the fascination around this particular piece of land. But speaking specifically to the orphan well relationship here, this is a significant price tag, and I know to the public, it will perhaps even come, not only as a surprise, there'll be a lot of questions around the, the price tag. You can be rest assured that all the council have, have looked at this very carefully. Staff are, are doing their part very diligently to ensure that the price tag, or did everything they could to ensure that the price tag need not be higher than it ought to be. This is a very specific type of demolition, and the details are in the report, but it is going to be very specialized, not the least of which we know with, with the asbestos and whatnot in the building, it will be a lot of containment to start and shared foundations, et cetera. So, we can't ignore it. The fact is that we have had the orphan well fund work with us at the onset and say, we'll, we'll buy the property, and so we were spared that cost, if you will. But in the end, the escalating costs for the demolition and maintenance of that property and the budding neighbors to either side, the price tag has, has increased significantly. But it is a warranted cost based on the specialization of work being done here, and, and if anything I add to the conversation, I can assure you that this council has looked at it very carefully.
Thank you. Councillor Turnbull?
Thank you, your worship. Through the Chair to councillor Friesen. The Alberta government, in fact, is at the Supreme Court because of the Bankruptcy Act, because companies that are leaving these orphan wells are companies that have gone bankrupt. And of course, the Bankruptcy Act always gives the remaining assets or funds to those people who have a legitimate credit, such as banks, salaries, and that kind of stuff. And so, of course, unlike other companies, the City of Medicine Hat can never go bankrupt. So we, we do have to have the responsibility, and we, we are doing, I think, a, a very good job at, at recognizing where, where the problems are. We've got a long way to go when we, our field shut down in the next so many years, we have to reclaim all those because we can't go bankruptcy. So if the, the Alberta government wins that court suit, then of course, companies can't, won't be able to walk away without their assets being given back to the, the orphan well, so.
Thank you. Councillor Hirsch?
Just a supplementary question. I mean, obviously, this is something that has to be done, and I'm fully, fully supportive of it. The only question I have is, with the, the tear down itself and the idea of maybe some road closures and something coming into play, did the contractor indicate how long this might come in as far, because I recognize that some businesses have been, just went through an infrastructure change in terms of pipes and stuff, and the road was dug up, and, and here we are again revisiting that area, unfortunately.
Through the Chair, I'm not, I don't have definitive information on the timelines for this, we still need to tender it, obviously. But with this kind of demolition, a lot of the work happens on the inside without anything really being closed off or, or impacted on the outside of the building, and the actual final takedown is, is pretty quick normally. We'll certainly work with the neighbors down here and make sure everyone is notified and, and that we mitigate as far as we possibly can. The whole idea with taking the building down is, is so that or for the orphan well association will have open access with, even with a rig if needed, if they need to come in and do further work in the future. So we will never put a habitable structure, that'll be part of the restrictive covenant of this, is that this will become a little open space, a little pocket park, a little bit of parking, potentially patio for, for some of the neighbors or whatever, but we will not put habitable structures in there, so it'll create another open space in the downtown.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, if we could vote. That was unanimous. Thank you.
Our next report is item 5.2, page 16, Corporate Services Committee meeting, minutes of February the 13th. This report's for adoption and information with the annual hedging policy review for adoption.
So moved?
Second.
Any comments? All right, seeing none, if we could call the question? That was unanimous. Thank you.
Moving along now to reports for reception. Item 6.1, on page 89, you'll find the Municipal Planning Commission meeting, minutes January the 24th. I just want to draw council's attention to the MPC recommendation regarding bylaw 4457, which is on the agenda tonight for second and third reading. Thank you.
Can I get a motion for reception?
I make the motion to, to, at this report for reception, please.
Second.
So I don't know if anybody has some questions, but maybe we could ask councillor Varga to explain the MPCs.
Well, the, the motion that was in there was, because whenever we have a meeting, we usually need quorum.
Usually?
Right? It was, it was passed. It was passed that our quorum would be five, even though we only have seven members. And I, we always had a discussion on that, because a lot of the times, these people are business people in our community, and they can't always get to the meeting on a, on a Wednesday afternoon at 2:00 or 2:30. So we, because the motion was changed two years ago, we, we discussed about changing it back to having four again, because four is a quorum of seven, I do believe, but I think that we talked about it in, in, in our meeting again, and I don't know if we're going to move forward with it or not. I guess that's up to council to decide whether we can change the bylaw to that, but we've dealt with five for the, the past two years, right? I, I know there was some objection because of the 2-2 vote, and then the people with, the people's, um, application, sorry, thank you very much, would, would be nullified, and they'd have to wait six months until they put another application forward. So that was our concern. I think MPC listened to it and, and felt that we'd keep it at the five. So I think it's going to be simple to, when we get to the bylaws, to, to defeat the bylaw, I believe, right, to move forward with the quorum of four. So we did take it back, as was suggested. We did look at it, and I think we're going to keep it at five. And unfortunately, if, if we don't get five as a quorum, it just gets passed on, and we have to wait two weeks to bring it up again in, in the next MPC. So our meetings happen every two weeks, every two weeks on a Wednesday. So if, if it does come to we don't have quorum or we have to cancel it, we had to cancel it twice, I believe, in the, in the four years that, that I was part of it. It didn't create any hassles, but maybe on a big issue it might somewhere down the road, but I guess we'll deal with that. The person will have to wait for his application to be heard two weeks later, so.
Okay. Any other questions or comments on the MPC report? All right. So I, I mean, we can talk about this when we get to the bylaw, but I mean, I'm going to respect the wishes of the MPC myself, so. Okay. I may as well vote on reception. That was unanimous. Thank you.
So moving on to bylaws now, bylaws for second and third reading. Item 7.1, page 108, is the bylaw 4457, a bylaw of the City of Medicine Hat to amend bylaw 3007, the City of Medicine Hat Municipal Planning Commission bylaw, and this is the bylaw we've just been speaking about.
So, point of clarity, we could cancel this right in the, in this reading, or not?
Yeah, but you, if you could move for second reading, and then we can vote on-
I move this bylaw for second reading.
Second.
So any questions or comments on second reading? Yeah, so, yeah, vote yes is against the MPC's new wishes. A vote no is to follow the wishes of the MPC currently. Okay? No is to maintain status quo. Yeah. Okay, any other questions or comments? All right, if we can vote. And that was unanimously defeated.
So our next bylaw for second and third reading is item 7.2, page 109, bylaw 4460, a bylaw of the City of Medicine Hat to incur indebtedness in the amount of $765,000 for the purpose of the 2018 13 KV overhead distribution system upgrades.
I move the bylaw 4460. Be read a second time.
Second. Questions, comments? All right, if we could vote. That was unanimous. Thank you. We could go for third reading?
I move the bylaw 4460. Be read a third time and passed.
Second.
Any questions or comments? We could vote. That was unanimous. Thank you.
Next bylaw for second and third reading is item 7.3, on page 113, bylaw 4461, a bylaw of the City of Medicine Hat to incur indebtedness in the amount of $749,000 for the purpose of 2018 13 KV underground distribution system upgrades.
I move bylaw 4461. Be read a second time.
I'll second that motion.
Any comments? Okay, if we could vote. Was unanimous. Thank you.
I move bylaw 4461. Be read a third time and passed.
Second.
Any comments, questions? All right, if we could vote. That was unanimous. Thank you.
Next item, bylaw for second and third readings is item 7.4, on page 117, bylaw 4463, bylaw of the City of Medicine Hat to incur indebtedness in the amount of $455,000 for the purpose of the 2018 new distributed services.
I'll move bylaw 4463. Be read a second time.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All right, if we could call the question? That passed unanimous.
I'll move the bylaw 4463. Be read a third time and passed.
Any comments, questions? If we could vote. And that was unanimous. Thank you.
Next bylaws on, is item 7.5, on page 121, bylaw 4466, a bylaw of the City of Medicine Hat to incur indebtedness in the amount of $440,000 for the purpose of 2018 pole testing and replacement.
I move the bylaw 4466. Be read a second time.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Okay, if we could vote. That was unanimous. Thank you.
I move the bylaw 4466. Be read a third time and passed.
Second.
Any comments? We could vote. That was unanimous. Thank you.
Last bylaw for second and third reading is item 7.6, page 125, bylaw 4468, a bylaw of the City of Medicine Hat to incur indebtedness in the amount of $621,000 for the purpose of the 2018 substation upgrades.
I move bylaw 4468. Be read a second time.
I'll second that.
Questions or comments? Councillor Turnbull?
Thank you, your worship. Just to remind everyone that at first reading, these total four bylaws come to slightly over $3 million. However, we, the, sorry, we withdrew $1.8 million of previous budget approvals on other projects, so the difference is that $1.2 million. So I hope I got those numbers correct, but it's not a total of $3 million.
Okay, councillor Hirsch?
Just, your worship, and just to appease the, and then let the public know that this is, even though we just arbitrarily go and vote and there's been no discussion, quite frankly, this is just something in terms of just the carry of the business of the day. It's just replacement. Things age and things need to get replaced, so I'm, I'm comfortable with it, but I just think it's important for our citizens to know it's not just knee jerk stuff, it is having some discussion about it, so.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Councillor Friesen?
Just, I did, you've brought something to my mind, just to add. The one we previously discussed about pole replacement and upgrades is a really good example for people listening at home. When we just, you know, vote for all this stuff, and it, it adds up to so much money. When you think about that really bad storm we had in August, I think it was, in the Crescent Heights, and there was a pole down with a tree, this, this budget amount would be the pot of money, if you will, that's used to replace those kinds of things. If you didn't have a replacement fund, then you'd have to find the money to do that. So it gives a very real life example for something we just voted for.
Councillor Turnbull?
Yes, thank you, your worship. Yeah, I'd like to just pick up on that. It's, in order for, the responsibility of the City of Medicine Hat, the electrical Jenco, is we, we need to provide electricity. We can't afford to have burnouts and downtime. And so we have to do a constant maintenance program of upgrading lines. I think we talked about the, the one lines underground, we were aluminum in one time. That's not, not a good factor anymore, so those have to be replaced, because they do come with a, a substantial downside to them. So this is always about the revenue that we generate from operating Jenco, and these are some of the costs that require us to perform those duties and make a profit. So it's, it's not, for me, it's an investment. We're investing to make our Jenco more profitable and, and more safe, and also more reliable. Thank you.
Any other comments? All right, if we could vote. And that was unanimous. Thank you.
I move bylaw 4468. Be read a third time and passed.
Second that. Second that.
Questions, comments? All right, if we could vote. And that was unanimous. Thank you. No notices of motion and business? So seeing no more business before this council, we're adjourned.